Good morning, I'm the father of being your lawyer. Uh, Mr. Brett, would you uh, do this in the place this morning, please?
Heavenly Father, this morning, of course, our thoughts are with the good folks of Boston. We gathered many times in this room to pray for members of our own college family, for victims of school shootings around the country, for police officers killed in St. Petersburg, and this morning, we're praying and thinking of the families in Boston who have suffered this incredible tragedy. Of the father whose family was waiting to greet him as he crossed the finish line, and his eight-year-old son was killed, and his daughter was, has lost a leg. We can't even begin to understand the nature of such evil, but we know always that you are with us, and that you will surround these families who are absolutely at the worst points of their lives, trying to understand, trying to recover, trying to heal, carry them through this time, continue to surround us all with your love and protection. In your name is great. Amen.
And then, applause to ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Law, for recognitions and announcements?
There are several. We will start with Lanay Richardson, the Sandy Miller Award for Women's Basketball. Tanja?
All right.
Mark Strickland?
Where's Coach?
Oh, there she is. Morning, members of the board, Dr. Law. We've got two very special individuals here this morning. I'll start with the first award recipient that goes to a student athlete in the state of Florida that's obtained a 3.3 GPA or higher. She actually has a 3.91 GPA. It's awarded to only one sophomore in the state of Florida. It's Lanay Richardson behind me. Hold on just one second. Lanay, this award goes to the Sandy Miller Scholar-Athlete Award recipient for 2013. We're awfully proud of your accomplishments inside the classroom and on the basketball court.
This second award, she did not know she was going to get this this morning. She's very humble, asked not to be recognized, but you all should know that Coach Davidson is also our 2012-2013 Southern Conference Coach of the Year for the state of Florida.
All right. Don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere, stay right up here.
Board members, y'all have anything you want to add to that?
Oh, just congratulations. Excellent job.
Thank you. Mr. Brett?
You know, our chairman claims to be a basketball player.
Claims to be an athlete.
Noticing the way he entered the room before, I would say, stay away from him. Congratulations.
Hold on. Ms. Richardson, congratulations, you are truly showing folks that you're a student and then an athlete first. That's why it says student-athlete, and I had the privilege of being that as well, and a great job. Coach, thank you for all you're doing and all you've done. You know, when you got hired, I won't say any names, but some folks around here said we hired a good one. And the fact that we're winning awards for students and athletes being academically challenged and, and doing what they're supposed to do in the classroom, and then also, you know, we came out, I think the only one left is me and Mr. Brett, came out to a basketball game and we saw how active you were and making sure these young ladies are playing tough. But thank you for molding and shaping our young people into being better students, but also better people once they finish. Thank you for all you've done, and I, I used to have a jump shot a long time ago, but I can't get my left hand up right now, so I'll come. No, thank you seriously for all you've done, we appreciate you, and congratulations to you both.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, Dr. Law, back to you.
Model United Nations, Dr. Cooper.
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Law, it is my pleasure this morning to present the team that we sent to the Model UN in New York in March. This is the second year that we have participated, and our 23-member team received a distinguished delegation award. They represented the country of Congo, and then two of the members participated in a Security Council that represented Colombia. There are over 200 colleges from the United States and other countries throughout the world that participate, and only 20% of the teams are given an award, and so we're very proud of our team members as well as our two faculty who went with them to New York, Earl Freitas and Randy Lightfoot. Neither of them could be with us this morning, but we are very proud and very pleased at the work that the students have accomplished.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this, this work endures over a long period of time culminating in a trip to New York City where students have a very intense week of competition and intellectual growth with colleges and universities, from students at colleges and universities across the country and internationally. The idea that our students have gone there and have been recognized for their diligence in testimony to them and to, I see Dr. Joe Smiley and Heather is here too. Faculty help, but students put in the time and energy. This is a significant accomplishment, and we want to thank you all very, very much.
Board members?
Just, I, I had the opportunity this morning to share breakfast with, with Brian and learn a little bit more about what they, what they've been through, and I think it's a tremendous accomplishment out of, out of 200 facilities or institutions kind of worldwide, you know, St. Pete College gets recognized as one of the distinguished groups, so congratulations on your efforts and, and the work that you put into it.
Thank you so, thank you so much for representing the college and representing us well. It's, you know, it's easy to represent and go and do things, but it's not easy to do it well, and you guys have done it very well, and thank you to staff that, that has been a part of this, we really appreciate you all. And it's great when we have young people that are active and spread the good name of St. Petersburg College, so thank you so much for doing that well.
Who's the talking chief? Step forward in the same way.
Hello, on behalf of Model United Nations, I would like to thank the prestigious Dr. Law and the wonderful Honorable Board of Trustees for giving us this opportunity. Thank you so much.
And then, Mr. Chairman, just one more, and this one is another very fine recognition, and if we would, Dr. Nikotera and Arlene Gillis, I believe, is here.
All right. Uh-oh. I'm a little short for this, but good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. I am very pleased this morning to introduce four extraordinary individuals. Back in, in this January, they accompanied 11 combat wounded veterans up Mount Kilimanjaro. So it's my pleasure to introduce Program Director of Orthotics and Prosthetics, Arlene Gillis, one of our students, a senior in our OMP program, Ted Graves, retired commander who led this group, retired air, naval commander, David Olson.
Captain.
Captain, sorry Dave, I just wanted to give you up a little bit there. Dave and I go back a long way. And the benefactor for the project, Mrs. Carol Martin. So I'm going to turn it over to Captain Dave Olson.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you all very much. I see I have something in common with at least someone here, okay? So I, I know your pain.
Yes, thank you, I feel it.
We want to thank you for the opportunity to come in here today. I'm the director of the Combat Wounded Veteran Challenge, and what we do on an annual basis is take combat wounded veterans that are amputees, those that are afflicted with post-traumatic stress disorder and traumatic brain injuries, and we conduct research on how we can best ameliorate those conditions and improve upon prosthetics, in this case, and orthotics to bring a better quality to their lives. In January, we, we did go to Kilimanjaro and we summited with the great support of your college, and for that, we have taken up a couple of expedition flags and had them all signed, and we would like to present those to you, Dr. Law, and to you, Dr. Nikotera, for all your support and your great partnership, and we hope for a great partnership in the years to come. So with that, I'd like to read, first to Dr. Nikotera, okay? Combat Wounded Veteran Challenge, Kilimanjaro Research Expedition Team, 2013. Proudly present our expedition flag to Dr. Phil Nikotera with sincere appreciation for your valued participation and support of our Kilimanjaro Challenge to conduct medical research involving traumatic brain injury testing, PTSD and prosthetics evaluation for combat wounded and injured veterans.
Thank you.
And, Dr. Law, especially for you, we've had this one signed. Combat Wounded Veteran Challenge, Kilimanjaro Research Expedition Team, 2013. Proudly present our expedition flag to Dr. Bill Law with sincere appreciation for your orthotics, or your OMP program director's valued participation and support of our expedition Kilimanjaro Challenge to conduct medical research involving TBI testing, PTSD and prosthetic evaluation to combat wounded and injured veterans. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We could not have done this without, without Arlene and Ted. It was quite amazing to watch them summit over 19,000 feet with us in those conditions. We went through a snowstorm, hailstorm, cold weather, and hot weather, but they did tremendously well, and we look forward to an increased partnership with you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you kind of puzzle shop me on the topic? Thank you. Board members? Any comments?
I have no comments. No comments.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for your patience, I think all were worthy of recognition this morning.
Terry Marshall, thank you. Okay, we're down to the board member comments, if anybody has anything.
I have nothing.
Oliver?
None.
Mr. Brett? I have none, we'll move to the meeting. Do I, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of March 19?
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposing, and meetings are accepted as written. Mr. Lang, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
How are you today?
I'm doing fine.
Good, good. Is there a report this morning?
There's no report this morning.
Mr. Gardner?
Mr. Chair, there's no report, good morning.
Okay. And Dr. Oliver, Seminole Campus, good morning, Dr. Oliver, how are you?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. What is this? For the purposes of today's presentation, it is a map, an innovative way of finding your way around St. Petersburg College and specifically the Seminole Campus. The SPC Seminole Campus will soon join a group of about 500 colleges and universities around the country, and one of the first in Florida, to participate in the Google Indoor Mapping Project. The research shows that almost 90% of the US population own a cellphone, more cellphones than people was the stat I saw recently, and an SPC study produced two years ago by our Marketing and Public Information Office showed that 95% of our students have high-speed internet access, 85% have a laptop or tablet, and 75%, 70% had a cellphone, and we know those numbers are much higher today. The Google Indoor Mapping Project provides a wayfinding tool for this generation. This video provides a 30,000-foot view of that service.
Throughout history, mapmakers have helped us discover where we were and where we were going, but while it may seem like every corner of the world has been surveyed and charted, navigating the world of indoor spaces can still be somewhat vexing. A map may help you get from your house to the airport, but oftentimes, it leaves you at the front door. Many places provide a "you are here" directory, but if you don't know where "here" is in relation to "there," you can quickly become lost in a veritable labyrinth of unknown twists and turns. This is why the mapping folks at Google added indoor Google Maps. Now it's easy to figure out where you are, orient yourself, and even know what floor you're on. Best of all, this feature now appears right within Google Maps on Android devices, meaning you can plan your trip the whole way through and never worry about getting lost in the wrong department again.
The, a seven-person survey team from Google visited the Seminole Campus last month, and they mapped out all of our buildings and locations within which we wanted them to identify. They literally walked across the campus for a full day, mapping every individual room and location. This is a mock-up of how the library will look in Google Maps, and students and patrons will be able to zoom in to areas and find individual locations like a classroom number or our conference center. Kudos to our campus information services librarian Chad Mairn, I think Chad's in the audience, for spearheading and making contact on this initiative. We hope to have the survey project completed and this tool in use in time for our students in finding their fall classes and of course for folks in the community to find places like our conference center and the digitorium. And I will pause for questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Oliver.
One, one footnote, because there was a question about areas that might be sensitive, and we, we've gotten some questions about that from campus security. We are able to identify areas that, that we do not want to be listed and identified. We would not identify an individual faculty office, for example, and the University of Florida decided it didn't want any of its buildings inside noted, so we have that capability of being able to be as granular as we want as this process goes through. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much this morning. Dr. Dean, Dean's floor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
Dr. Law, good morning. I appreciate this opportunity to come and speak to this morning about our veterinary technology program, and today I thought what I would concentrate on were our out-of-classroom opportunities that are afforded to our students. These are a few of the internships our students have available to them if they want to build a resume and experience things outside of the normal realm of veterinary technology, but today I thought what I would concentrate on would be our exchange program that we have currently underway with the veterinary technology program at Hansenberg College in Colding, Denmark. The program is set up as a true cultural exchange in that when their students come to visit us, they stay with our students for two weeks and do everything that our students do. They'll go to class with them, they'll go to their job sites, they'll go to, I think they went to Big Cat Rescue yesterday, so for the two weeks, their students do everything that ours do. And then in June and July, our students will go there for two weeks, stay with the students that they've hosted here, and do the same thing. And so, a true cultural exchange, and through the efforts and generosity of our foundations department, some of the costs of our students have been able to be defrayed, which helps quite a bit. And we're fortunate enough today to have two of the students and their faculty advisor chaperone with us today. And we're excited to have them, they're through the jet lag period. I think they're through their jet lag, so they're a little more alert and ready to go now. Are there any questions?
Mr. Brett, how many students?
We have six coming to us, and we have three going to them.
And you have host families here that?
They're staying with our students while they're here.
Excellent, that's great, and so, and I'm sorry, you're sending six in the summer?
We're sending three, three to Denmark, they'll go the last week of June and the first week of July.
And this is, this happens every year?
This is our first time, and we're planning and hoping that this grows each year, and we'll, we can send more and more back and forth.
That's great, awesome, thank you.
Again, how, how long does the experience last?
Two weeks, each way.
Each way. Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you. Dr. Mercadanti? How are you this morning?
Morning, how are you?
Good.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Law, BOT members, thank you for this opportunity to share a brief update on issues related to our faculty governance organization. Basically, I'd like to start off with the Gen Ed changes. As you know, the state legislature last year reduced Gen Ed from 36 credits to 30, and that was to begin in the fall 2014. There's current legislation that is proposing to return that to 36 credits, and most people are very much in favor of that legislation, and it's looking good as of, as of now. Obviously, we won't know for, for a couple more weeks, but it's looking good that we will be dealing with 36 credits for our students rather than 30. Currently, the SPC Gen Ed Committee has over 40 members on it, representing all interested parties, and we've held two meetings so far, and will hold our third meeting next Friday. And those meetings have been open discussions, again, with all shareholders and people involved to make sure that our response maintains student success and stays on the focus of Gen Ed. That committee is co-chaired by Dr. Cooper and me, and that brings me to my next topic of faculty administration collaboration. As I look back on this past year, I'm kind of impressed at how we have been able to basically collaborate with the faculty and administration on a number of issues. At Faculty Senate, which meets every month, we've had Dr. Law visit, we've had Dr. Cooper, Dr. Williams. Last Wednesday, we actually had 12 deans sit in front of Faculty Senate, and this was a great dialogue. It was an open kind of discussion on concerns and issues, and I think we, we both learned a lot from each other. About a week ago, I attended the High Impact Conference in San Antonio, Texas, along with Dr. Law, Dr. Cooper, Dr. Williams, Dr. Carragio, and Dr. Gordon, and this involved 28 colleges focusing on promising practices to improve student success, and I think we'll hear a little bit more about that in a, in a few minutes. But again, a, a great opportunity to collaborate between faculty and administration, and I really appreciated the, the invite on that. Finally, I want to share with you the FGO Creativity Grant. This is our first year, our inaugural year of these competitive FGO creativity grants, which can be awarded for up to $5,000 and are designed to support projects that align with the mission of the college and benefit SPC students through faculty research and/or creative, creativity initiatives. I'd like to share with you the winners of the five grants, and, and some of them are here today, so I'll ask them to stand. Our first grant recipient worked with students in her elementary education class to create a creative journal where her students published individual written compositions that responded to artwork in our own Lippa Ratner Museum. The journal is titled Awakening the Artistic Spirit: From a Whisper to a Shout, and we made sure you all have those journals with you this morning. Our grant recipient just got back yesterday from speaking about this project at the International Conference for College Teaching and Learning. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Cher Gallweiler.
Thank you.
Our next grant recipient was awarded to a professor in our Natural Science Department who wanted to combine approaches from multiple scientific disciplines in order to conduct faculty and student research, which would determine which herbs and spices have an inhibitory effect on the growth of bacteria. This grant helps SPC students to become more competitive in their future academic programs and more marketable in the modern workforce. The recipient of this award was Dr. Ray Menard, I'm not sure he is with us today. Congratulations to Dr. Menard. Our next grant recipient is with us and is an accomplished musician who is producing 1,000 professionally-recorded DVDs of the Helios Jazz Orchestra and distributing complimentary copies to public school music directors and others, and once that's complete, I'll make sure all of you get a copy of that DVD. The project involves both SPC music faculty and Myra students, and will enhance student recruitment for music programs at SPC. The recipient of this award is Dr. David Manson. Our next two winners, I don't think are here this morning, the next grant was awarded to two marine biologists who are setting up a high-quality marine biology lab. Students collaborate with faculty and gain firsthand experience in scientific research. The lab is not only helping students acquire skills in real research, but it also motivates students to present and publish their research at professional science conferences. Two faculty members headed this grant, Dr. Monica Laura and Dr. Hayward Matthews.
I'm sure they're with us.
Yeah, I believe they're teaching this morning. And our final recipient is with us this morning, and is a communication and humanities professor who'll be walking 300 miles throughout Spain this summer as she shares this experience with students in her humanities class. She will be following the medieval Camino pilgrimage route, and she will bring an international experience to students in real-time videos and interactive blogs, and it's hoped that this project will help to develop the Camino experience into an exciting study abroad course. The recipient of this grant is Professor Linda Jaikle. Thank you for your time, you'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments? Thank you, Dr. Mercadanti. If we don't have any other comments, we'll move into old business where we can have a brief discussion about our Midtown stuff, if Dr. Law'd like to kick that off.
Sure will, I, thank you for the opportunity here. This is a project, of course, well-known to all of us, and, and it has had a storied background and a, a not very happy path forward. We find ourselves today, though, where I think we can overcome all past difficulties, learn from some, some mistakes that we made along the way, get the trip, the project back on track, and move it forward. So I, I take full responsibility for the fact that we are back here today, but here's, here's where we find ourselves. The presentation and the recommendation that I made to you some months ago regarding the general contractor for the project was subject to a, a administrative procedures contestation. As we went through the details of that contestation, we, we saw some things, we learned some things, we did some things, we were prepared to go forward with that, but along the way, we found that in a We were prepared to go forward with that, but along the way, we found that in a, in a bigger sense, we had created a problem. Parts of that process needed to be advertised as public meetings and recorded. That did not take place. So even had we proceeded to the first level of review as to whether or not the bid was properly structured and recommended to you, we had a tragic flaw sitting just over the horizon that could have derailed the project some months downstream. That review of that situation would have to occur in a court situation rather than an administrative hearing situation, working with all of our counsel, including some, some very, very specific outside counsel. The guidance to me was, Dr. Law, go back to the board, reject the bids, restart the process, fix all of the flaws that had been raised as concerns, and get the project back on track. We, we have worked to do that for you today. The, for me, the saving grace is that these companies that, that contested, and they contested hard, and they, they gave us, I think, their very best energies. We're not asking them to do anything else. They have done the work to do this. They may have to, they, they may have learned some things along the way, they may want to reformat exactly how they say some things, emphasize some things differently, but the hardware, 85 or 90% of their work has already been completed. Working with the chairman and in an effort to, to be sure that we, all, all cards are face up. The chairman asked that we include the board at an even higher level of participation, and, and I'm happy to do that. You know, I think there's a fairness estimate that's a Midtown, it's not just another construction project. You know, it's not. It's got a lot of moving parts, and it's got a lot of community impact, and it's got a lot of vectors that, that push it in one direction or another, and all those sorts of things. So today, I am in front of you, having somewhat chastened. We have to back up from where we've been. I would ask you to do two things. That is to reject the bids that were previously submitted and, and the decision that you previously made, adopt a refined request for qualifications process, and we'll move that forward. We think we can have a revised recommendation in front of you in 60 days, and the project will be back on track at that point. Mr. Chairman, I think that's a fair statement of where we've been over the last 60 days.
Before we move forward, Dr. Law, let me say this. Dr. Law has worked, Dr. Law, Ms. Gardner, and Mr. Lang, as well as our outside counsel, have worked very diligently to accommodate this board and to make sure that we have some input. But not only that, I think he's right that this is a project that is very different, and we are trying to make sure that we meet a lot of needs. And that happens sometimes where you have to take a step back to take five steps forward. So if you, if you don't mind, I'll move forward with a couple of things that we're going to add. Is that okay, Dr. Law?
Please, I'm...
Is that okay, Mr. Lang? The discussion, and we can move this forward very quickly. I don't know why we need to belabor it for a very long time. One of the things that I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask that, we have a board member here, that, Dr. Law, that has extensive experience in terms of building and construction, more than you or I, or just about probably anybody in this room. I want to ask Mr. Oliver to chair this process for us, because I think he, as a chairperson, would give us some, if he goes through the process, he can come back and make better recommendations the next time if we need to change anything. So today, I'm going to ask Mr. Oliver to chair the selection process and serve as our chair for that, if you, if you would accept that. That's one of the things that I would like the board to bro vote on. The second thing is that the board, each one of the other members of the board, meaning myself, Mr. Captain Fine, and Mr. Brett, will appoint someone to the committee.
Screening committee.
To the screening committee, which is the selection committee that Mr. Oliver will oversee. Also, at that point, we'll have interviews. Dr. Law will then sit in on those interviews with the selection committee, and then the, the, the final two or three, or whatever we come up with. However, that process happens at the end of Mr. Oliver's selection committee. Those folks will then go up to the chairman of the selection committee and his co-chair, or co-chairs at that point, Dr. Law and Mr. Oliver, and you all will bring a recommendation to the board together. Mr. Lang and Ms. Gardner will sit in on all processes, and we will film and tape all processes so that we protect not only the integrity of the process, but protect the board, Dr. Law, and this college. Other than that, I think that we are, go ahead, I'm sorry, Dr. Law.
Mr. Chairman, just, there's a need for just a little bit of level of precision. What we have, in order to comply fully with the law, we have a two-step process.
That's right.
There is a screening process that limits the, the number of finalists, okay? That is not the part of the law that calls how the final determination will be made. That is simply to provide a shortlist, that is an unranked shortlist. The committee will not use numeric...
That's right.
...criteria. So that is simply to move us from, we'll get 11, 12, 10, whatever, to get us to a list of three to five. When the list of three to five is forwarded to the selection committee, that is Mr. Oliver, myself, Vice President Duncan, I'm trying to think, Jim Whacter is on that committee, that is the selection committee that is required by law to make the recommendation to the board. That is the committee that will actually make the, the recommendation. Look, Mr. Quizical, Mr. ...
Yeah, because I, I'm not understanding that. I thought that once we left, Mr., that, that all those folks, if they wanted to, they will sit in on the interviews, and then they'll come to you two, not to Dr. Duncan and Mr. Whacter and all those folks. You two will get that shortlist, and from that point, we will move forward. That's my understanding.
Okay. The, the...
They're more than welcome to sit in after you get your shortlist, after they get their shortlist. They're more than welcome to sit in with you all on interviews, if we're doing interviews at that point. But the, the final one or two or three, whoever you select, will go to you two as co-chairs, and then we will, that will be the, you all will do your process and bring it back to the board. However you set that up, that's between you two. It needs to be, I think we talked about opening up the interviews to the public, general public, so that everybody could come, maybe. But, but I don't want to have too many hands in the fire.
The, the key is, it, we have to be absolutely clear as to which, where the, the ranked numeric list that must be presented to the board is created. And that is created with Mr. Oliver and myself.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. I'm most comfortable, and I, I think the board members, if you have any disagreement with that, chime up, but I think it gives you all the opportunity to sit down, go through the shortlist, so to speak, and then come back with a good recommendation. You follow that, Mr. Oliver?
I follow.
Dr. Law? I think you said, we, we've had a lot of people involved in these things before. I just think the least, least amount, you two can come up with that, how you come down to the final person, but I think we'd be most comfortable with you two, you and, and Mr. Oliver bringing that recommendation back.
Let me, let me be clear. I'm, I'm, my only, my must-have was that in the end, I think it is the president's job to structure a recommendation to the board.
Exactly. I think you two can do that very well.
I think that is my role and responsibility to you.
Exactly.
So we now have a way to do that.
All right. Um, there's, any, any other comments from any board members? I just have a couple of mistakes that I wanted to correct, just, just on paper. It's nothing that is big.
I just have a question on the timeline. What do you think this process, how long will this process?
I, I think we'll need 60 days.
60 days.
There are some advertising requirements that have to kick in starting today. Pulling any committee together takes a little bit of time. We probably won't make the public notice in time for the May meeting. Don't forget, you, you got to back up seven or eight days, okay? So it'll go to the June board meeting, Mr. Fine.
Mr. Brett?
I just need a little clarification. As I understand it, there is a screening committee. The screening committee will be made up of members from the college, members from the community. This committee will review all of the applications, narrow down to an unranked list of three.
That's right.
Those three names will then go to the selection committee, made up of Mr. Oliver, Dr. Law, and that's it.
Yeah.
And then, from your discussions and evaluations, and you'll come back with the recommendation to the board.
I think that's it.
Thanks.
I think that, Mr. Brett, I, I think that leaves us in good hands with the final three, number one. Number two, I think it keeps the process going and very quick, because we, we don't want to be doing this in August. I don't want to do this again. But also, I think it allows for someone from the board that we trust that has extensive experience, and then our president, who we trust, who has done this a thousand times as well, can discuss it and bring us back, and go, and they can, at that point, go back through the process and say, have we missed anything? Do we think we need to change anything? And so, I think those two give us the best chance to be successful in the process. And that's why I say it goes to those two, and then we, they can, and Dr. Law then, along with Mr. Oliver, can bring that back to the board trustees. Everybody okay with that? Um, Dr. Law, the only two things that I saw in our packet on the, on, on the computer, we have general information, and it's at five points.
You have a revised...
I don't have a revised here.
It should be in front of you.
It says general information. I have revised, but it says 15 points. But don't forget, we were adding a location as well. We want those folks to, I don't have a location on mine, I'm sorry. So I have general inform... You have that? General information.
Laura, we, Devron, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this morning, we handed out all the technical revisions. Is it sitting in front of you somewhere?
I have, I have a packet, and it's, it's, it's revised to the point where it has the 15 points. It just does not have the locate, and location. Yeah, I see it down here, but we should add it up here, and location, just simply, simply because I don't want anyone to be able to say, we didn't say that, or they missed that particular point. So on the point A of the selection team, uh, information...
What page are you on?
I'm on page seven.
Page seven.
The very first one, A, it has general information. I want to add location, and location, and this is why we have leakage, and leakage is when someone has a corporate headquarters outside of St. Petersburg, that, there's a portion of those funds that go back to that particular corporate headquarters. We want to know where your, your corporate headquarters is, if it's not in Tampa, your office is here, and your corporate headquarters. Where's your corporate headquarters for this particular corporation? And the one reason that I ask that, board members, that we put that in there, and, and I'm fine if you guys disagree, I, I put that in there is because this is, again, yet, yet, what Dr. Law said, it's a, it's a very different project, and I want to make sure that we get all of the dollars that we can, credit for the dollars that we can that are circulating within that community. So if your corporate headquarters is in St. Petersburg, then the dollars that we spend with that particular company, whoever that may be, is going to recycle in St. Petersburg more times than, you know, if we were hiring the Outback Steakhouse to build this, just so I don't say any construction names. The Outback Steakhouse to build this, and their corporate headquarters is in Tampa. So there's a portion of those funds that are going to go over there. Now, that's not a bad thing, but by statutes and rule, we can add location, and we like to add location to make sure that we know that who we're hiring, where they're based, and what, and, you know, what the history is of their company. So if, if there's no problem with that, I'd like to change that in the, just on that particular point. The rest of it, the rest of this seems fine to me. Like I said, Dr. Law, Mr. Lang, Ms. Gardner, everybody's been great about trying to accommodate us and make sure that the board has all the information. And at that point, I'll leave that. If you guys are okay with changing that, I have no other thing, anything else to add. I mean, you all, I'll take some questions or comments if you have any.
Let's take two separate motions, if you would, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One would be to abandon the existing bid award, okay? And then second would be to authorize the initiation of, of this process with the revised criteria.
Yes, sir. Do I hear a motion to, for the first one, to, to, I'm sorry, my mind went blank for a second, Dr. Law, to...
We need to abandon the previous award.
To abandon the, the previous bid, awards, award bid, and do I hear a motion for that?
So moved.
There's a motion by Captain Fine, any, the second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brett. Is there any discussion? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We have just taken back the bids from the previous process. I need a motion to accept the new process with the changes that we just discussed.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Brett, and a second.
Second.
Second by Captain Fine. Any discussion on the issue? And then, none? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We've accepted the, the new process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Law. Thank you, counsel, and thank you to all the staff, and also to the folks that have been in this process. We really apologize, and, you know, things happen, but if you work with us, I think you'll see we'll have a, we'll get it right, and we'll have a very clean process that everyone can live with. Right, Dr. Law? Thank you.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I mean, I, I didn't get where I am by backing up a lot, but on the other hand, Devron, Mr. Chairman...
You're fine.
You know, we, we made a significant change into longstanding practice here to focus on the impact on the community. And, and if it was easy, it would already have been done, and we, we're learning our way. We probably could have done it better. We're a lot smarter today than we were when we started it, but, but let's keep focused. We want this project to impact as strongly as it can in a community that needs that impact.
That's right.
So that, that keeps me motivated.
Well, I'm definitely not saying backing up. I, you know, I broke my arm because I didn't back up, but, but no, we're definitely not backing up. But it is a process, it's a learning process, and this had been done a different way for a very long time. And I have to say, you know, leaders, a lot of leaders lead in different paths and different ways, and, Dr. Law, you should be commended for your leadership and your staff, because, you know, you weren't resistant to change. And sometimes, we run into that a lot, and, you know, we're only going to learn through the tough times that we run into and the things that we don't always get right. And as a board, we didn't get it totally right either, but we're learning, and I think that this is a process that we can live with, and it's going to work out just fine. And, and it is, it is a community that needs the biggest impact, I mean, that it could get, and, and be mindful of this. When we do this, when we, and we are going to do it, we're going to break ground on this building. You don't have to worry about that. When we do this, you have to remember, this is the biggest economic impact that has hit this community in over 50 years, I think, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. So we're making a huge impact, and we want to do it the right way. So thank you to all the staff and everybody who has been a part of this process to make, make it very successful, because we, it will be successful. Thank you. If we're, if we're done with that, we'll move on to the administration, the Fox, the study and implementation of the Fox Lawson Study.
Mr. Chairman, this was on last month. It is the third part of a, of a three-phase review of compensation and structures across the college over the, over the past three years. Because of the complexity and the, the impact of it, it was asked to give it another month. Some, some board members had some quiet questions on that, and we've met individually with all the board members on this, and offered for adoption.
Any discussion by the board members before we take it up? None?
No.
Okay.
Move approval.
It's been moved by Mr. Brett to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver. Any discussion? None? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We'll move forward to the, to the next thing, which is the salary schedule and the information items that there are.
No, those are part of that item.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure you didn't have to anybody come up. So we're on a new business. We're at the, the survey. Dr. Cooper, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
Uh-oh, we're in trouble.
Yes, you are. You know, one of the things that we're very proud of is being a data-driven institution, and so we're very excited this morning to share with you some information about how our entering students feel. And so first, we want to share that you have the PowerPoint in your packets, and you have a copy of the actual survey results that were sent to us from the S E N S organization. So we're going to share with you some cool things this morning about the S E N S survey. The survey of entering students' engagement is administered nationally. It was designed by the Center of Community College for Student Engagement, better known as C E S I. You've heard us talk about C E S I a lot. The purpose of the survey is to help colleges understand why students succeed or why they do not, especially for those students who are just entering college. 245 institutions participated from 38 states. The survey is administered during Week Four and Five of the semester for the fall term. So it was done in September of 2012. The S E N S allows us to understand students...
The SENS allows us to understand students' critical early experiences with the college because research shows us that that can make a difference to their staying power. Students who are engaged with us from day one are more likely to be retained and persevere. And all of this is based on reliable and valid data so that we can make informed decisions as we move forward with our initiatives to improve.
So let's look at some of the benchmarks that we received from the 2012 survey, starting with Early Connections. Early Connections will show the college how students feel early on about how they engage us, how our staff treat them, how they meet new people, how they connect to folks who are coming, who are at the college, to be comfortable, to want to stay. So you can see that this year, SPC exceeded the ratings of the extra-large colleges, which are colleges with fifteen thousand students or more on duplicated head count, and the Achieving the Dreams colleges. And we're a part of Achieving the Dream, but we still have a little ways to go in top-performing colleges. High Expectations and Aspirations. That is another area that's critical to students who are first starting at the institution. And it's important that as staff and faculty that we help students understand what it takes to go to college and help build that high expectation for them so that they'll know, here's what is expected of a college learner. And you'll see, again, SPC exceeded the extra-large colleges and the Achieving the Dreams schools, just a little shy of the top-performing colleges. Clear Academic Plan and Pathway. This area is very critical. When a student wants to complete, they need to know what they're here for and what courses they need to take. And so I think you've heard us talk a lot about the learning plan and having students understand, you do this this semester, you do this next semester, you do this, and how that works. And so, having a clear academic plan and pathway is another area that is very critical to students who are onboarding. And as you can see, we are right on the tail of those top-performing colleges.
Effective Track to College Readiness has to do with effective assessment and placement into appropriate courses and ongoing support so that students can succeed. Again, we still have room to improve in regards to achieving similar results as the top-performing colleges. Engaged Learning has to do with instructional approaches such as teamwork, interactive class periods. Sometimes, we hear about the flipped classroom, where there's more discussion, group work during the class period. And these are what research shows tend to engage the student, cause them to continue to succeed. Then we have the Academic and Social Support Network. This has to do with having access to information about the support services that are available to students and making sure that they know what they are, where they are, and how to use them.
So 2012 is not the first year that we have administered the SENS assessment. We also did it in 2011, and we thought it would be important for the board to see how we compared to ourselves last year. These are almost not apples and apples. They're different students. But as you can see in Early Connections, we're basically flat. So this is an area we're continuing to work on through the college experience. In High Expectations and Aspirations and Clear Academic Plan and Pathway, we've made some movement there and made some improvements.
Again, when we compare ourselves on the Effective Track to College Readiness, Engaged Learning, and Academic and Social Support Network, we see that it's pretty flat when we compare ourselves year to year. But based on the Center of Community College Student Engagement research, it usually takes about three years to impact your scores, and we've just begun the process of making a difference. And we know that there's more that we can do.
All right. These are the areas that, at SPC, our students rated us pretty high, and they felt very comfortable with. The first area you'll see is Clear Academic Plan and Pathway, and specifically, that an advisor actually helped the student set academic goals and create a plan for achieving them. And as you can see, for this year, SPC did considerably better than our college cohorts, the folks who took it with us. And then, the second one, you can see for a college staff member asking a student about commitments and what their life is like before they register for courses, to make sure that they're taking the right number of courses for success. We also improved in that area, and we exceeded the S E cohort. These are, these two pieces are part of the college experience.
When we look at areas of engaged learning where we are doing well, we find that most likely, our out-of-class support initiative and more of our professors requiring the use of technology has allowed for these improvements. Students are participating in supplemental instruction. They're using electronic tools to communicate with instructors and using their, our face-to-face tutoring. However, there are areas in which, in engaged learning and academic and social support networking, where we can improve. And this has to do with things like previously, a student knowing their name, another student in their class, working with other students on a project within a class, using electronic tools to communicate with another student in their class. Much of that has to do with collaborative projects in their classes and teamwork. And so we are looking at the dean's recommendation this year to provide faculty with a stipend to pilot projects in this regard, to see if we can improve that type of engagement in the classroom. And then, we still have room to grow in regards to using the writing, math, and skill labs, and using our computer labs. As was reported earlier, we just attended the High Impact Practice Institute in San Antonio. This was put on by the Center for Community Colleges Student Engagement. They have research that shows that there are high-impact practices. We chose five to work on because they fit very well with our Five One Eighty Plan. And for these practices to become part of the fabric of St. Petersburg College and our culture, we know that the key is communication, 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 because we want them to be woven together for our students from the day they walk into the door to the day that they walk across the stage at graduation. So we are looking forward to a holistic approach for our students.
So we know how students connect with the college early on, and that it's very critical for them to succeed. Keeping them enrolled in courses and actively engaged in their classes are very important. We recognize that we're moving in the right direction. We're very excited about the latest information we've received, but we also have to roll up our sleeves to make improvements and continue moving along in this direction. So we want to just thank you again for supporting the assessments that we're doing right now and for helping us learn more about how we can improve student success. Any questions?
Comments, Williams?
Good, Jim.
Sir Brett?
Thank you very much. Interesting. Just a question on the aspects of highest student engagement, and where we are clearly ahead of the curve when you compare us to the 2012 SENS cohort. And, Dr. Williams, I think you had mentioned that you're attributing some of that to the college experience, the Five by One Eighty, and the... Do you feel like that effort has been in the mix long enough to really influence these numbers as it has here?
Well, we, when we started assessing our first-time-in-college students within the first month of school, we did not have the tool. And now, we have those tools to impact them. And I think that specific areas of this that speaks to the academic advisors asking me information about my life, yes, because we were not doing that before. I think specifically, the learning plan has made huge changes. We're assessing the college experience tomorrow morning with the executive team, and we have some very important news to share with them. And I don't want to blow the provost thunder today, but I think we have enough information to show that those efforts are helping along in this initiative to help students stick around.
Do you have any rough idea about the percentage of students now that do have learning plans?
Oh, yeah.
There's over, this is about, what was it, nine thousand?
Almost nine thousand students.
Students have learning plans.
And this time last year?
Four?
Four thousand?
Three.
Thirty-five hundred.
That's when we first started. But we have a lot of students who are not enrolled in the SLS courses, completing their learning plans, online students completing their learning plans, that are not a part of our targeted group for support. And so, they're using those. And tomorrow, I think the president can come back to you and give you some cool stuff after tomorrow's presentation on the learning plan and the success rates of students who completed them and students who remain in school.
Well, we like cool stuff.
All right.
One other thing, I guess more for Dr. Cooper. You were touching on the aspects of the lowest student engagement, and you'd mentioned that there's going to be some pilot projects to try to increase that student engagement with one another. Can you give me an example of maybe what one or two of those might look like?
Well, it might be what we call a teamwork approach. So if there is, say, a project within the class, that instead of working individually on a project, they'll work within a team, and the whole team will be responsible for the results of the project. We feel that this is one type of engagement that can take place in a classroom, and very important in preparing our students for the world of work. Because obviously, no matter where you wind up, you're going to be having to work as a team with other people, learning to collaborate. Some other examples might be using group discussions and presentations. There are many different ways in which we can create a more collaborative environment within the classroom. And I know our faculty are extremely creative and will have some stellar ideas on what we can do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just brag a little bit, this High Impact Practices is through the University of Texas. It's funded by the Gates Foundation. These are, we're not there by accident, we're there by invitation. But I need to brag that Vice President Williams could not be part of our team because she is on the consultant faculty for the High Impact Practices. The work that she has done here has allowed her to emerge as a leader in the, in the direction of that national project. So we're very proud of her work there.
You guys listen to her.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments? No?
No.
Okay. We're on to Mr. Gray. Good morning. Good to see you again.
I think this was requested by the board last month and last month.
I think it was Mr. Brett, wasn't it?
I don't know.
Captain Fine.
Captain Fine, one or the other.
Captain Fine.
But I think we have a good presentation for you.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. The presentation we have this morning was built around five questions that were developed by the Disaster Resilient University Consortium of Colleges and Universities around the world. It is a network that allows for colleges and universities to share information in the areas of safety, security, emergency management, and so on and so forth. The five questions were developed for presentations such as this to board of trustees groups at the respective colleges and universities. As you can see, these are the five questions that were developed by the Disaster Resilient Group. The first question is, is emergency management a priority for senior campus executives? The 2007 gubernatorial Safe Schools Task Force came forward with several recommendations that colleges and universities in the state of Florida were recommended to adopt. One of those was to develop an Emergency Management Council, which we have done here at St. Petersburg College. The council meets once each semester and as needed during the school year. The council also reviews the emergency management plan or continuity of operations plans and are called as needed, as I mentioned. At the campus level, we've developed or organized campus incident response teams. These teams are led by our provost, our associate provost, who we call incident commanders. The teams are made up of staff members on the campus that are organized with roles and responsibilities to respond to a situation should it occur on the campus. The plan also calls for developing or determining predetermined sites for staging areas, meeting areas, and so on and so forth. And then finally, our Threat Assessment Plan is in place. That was mandated by the task force. And also, we have a personal protection and safety plan in place for our students and faculty. Essentially, what this is, is the Shots Fired Training Video, which provides information for faculty and staff as to what they should do, if they should be in a hostile person or active shooter situation. The snapshot there of the Emergency Management Council SharePoint Site provides icons for you to, you can link into any one of those icons and receive detailed information under those appropriate areas listed there. What plans are in place to protect students, faculty, and staff? We have a college-wide security staff made up of approximately forty officers. These officers are licensed by the state of Florida. They do receive continuous training both locally and through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Our officers have recently completed the FEMA course Active Shooter on-campus training, and we've recently partnered with our local law enforcement agencies to conduct walkthroughs, floor plans, aerial maps, et cetera, and also to conduct training on our campuses as well. The law enforcement agencies we use are, of course, the agencies that would service the local community of a specific campus. Has a comprehensive emergency notification plan been implemented? The Homeland Security National Management System, commonly known as NIMS, recommends that colleges and universities use a multi-layered approach to notifying faculty, staff, and students when there is an emergency on campus. Very simply, that means you just don't rely on any one particular system. You have a multi-layered approach to being able to send out alerts. As you can see from the diagram here, we have the ability to use outdoor, indoor technologies. We also have the ability to use electronic messaging services. The diagram under step one, once the decision is made to activate the system, we can use pre-recorded or pre-scripted messages to send out information quickly using our InformaCast system, which allows us to send messages instantly to audio speakers in our buildings, desktop computers, as well as Cisco IP phones. We also have another system called School Messenger, which is integrated with our InformaCast system, which also gives us the ability to send messages to mobile devices, home phones, emails, and text messaging as well. The Security Alert Program, we implemented about a year ago. It's been very well received by our faculty. It provides an opportunity for an instructor in a classroom, should they need assistance from security, to press onto that icon that is circled there. It's a red siren. Once they press onto that particular icon, it will notify the local campus security as well as security dispatch that there's an issue in a classroom, and then they respond accordingly. And again, that's been very well received by faculty this year. Some of the training that we provided over the last four or five years, as I mentioned earlier, our incident response teams have been trained on our campuses using the Incident Command System. We've utilized tabletop and simulated drills to train those teams, again, led by the Campus Incident Commander. Our Threat Assessment Teams have been trained using the protocols and program established by the Department of Education and the Secret Service. And then, we do have student training available online. It's called the Overview of the SBC Emergency Management Plan. We also encourage our instructors at the beginning of each semester to review the Emergency Response Guide, which is that yellow flip chart that is found in all of our offices and classrooms. And then, of course, the Shots Fired on-Campus video is available to our staff and students online. And I also go out and provide presentations to student government associations and faculty groups with the Shots Fired training as well. What are the highest priority hazards facing the college? Timely and comprehensive notification of an incident. Our notification systems are in place. We conduct regular tests and drills. When we see that there's a deficiency, whether a speaker may not be working or instructor's classroom computer may not be receiving that alert message, we work closely with our AIS Department, our Facilities Department, and security to address those deficiencies as soon as possible. This last bullet here is very important. Ensuring information procedures are updated and disseminated in a systematic and timely manner. We annually review our continuity of operations plan, as well as our St. Petersburg College Emergency Management Plan, and that is updated, again, once a year, and is required by the DOE as far as the continuity of operations plan that is reviewed and approved by them on an annual basis as well. How is compliance with state and federal laws managed? As I mentioned, the 2007 Governor's Task Force recommendations have been adopted and are in place, many of which you have seen here during this PowerPoint... in place, many of which you have seen here during this PowerPoint. Florida statutes require that each college and university have a continuity of operations plan. As I mentioned, our plan has been approved by the DOE and is in place. And federally, the Gene Clary Act, which requires colleges and universities to provide crime statistics, also to have a system in place for timely alerts and emergency notifications, is in place here at the college. This is a visual of an alert that would appear on an instructor's classroom computer. You can see there's a text that's been pre-scripted. We also have audio to this and I'd like to share with you what that would sound like this morning.
SPC Alert. Evacuate immediately. An emergency has occurred. Leave the building at once in a safe manner.
And as I mentioned, we have other pre-scripted messages that we could use, again, depending on what the particular situation would be. At this time, we're more than happy to entertain questions that you might have. In light of recent events, I know that there's been a lot happening around the country and certainly we feel well-prepared here at St. Petersburg College to deal with situations should they occur.
Any questions? Having fun?
Very good.
Great job. Thank you, Mr. Gray. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I did ask him to focus on incidents today. They have just as sophisticated a plan for continuity of operations in the event of hurricanes and other kinds of things. But you get a four or five-day notice on those. I mean, you ought to be able to deal with those kinds of things. It's when something is happening in real time, so I want you to have confidence that we have a game plan and we practice it and we evaluate it and we take it apart and put it back together and they do a really good job for us.
For the last few years, I've been greeted every morning when I come to St. Pete College, wherever I am, by these two great gentlemen out here. Could you introduce them just for the benefit of all of us?
Yes, the Director of our Campus Wide Security Services is Dan Barto here and he and I work very closely in developing these various programs. And the other gentleman is one of our supervisors from the Clearwater Campus, Joe Barry.
Gentlemen, it's been a pleasure to see your smiling, strong faces greeting us every morning. I feel secure every day I come here, so thank you.
And again, this work was requested. Dan had a chance to testify in Tallahassee on campus safety and security, so they had two, three colleges representative. Dan represented us very well in that to present our plan. So, gosh, we're always at the mercy of somebody headed for dastardly and bad things, but we know how to deal with these situations. We get good marks from our students on campus safety. Ever vigilant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report.
Dr. Duncan, good morning.
Good morning, members of the Board, Dr. La. You may recall, this time last year, we brought to you as one of our highest priorities a budget request to develop mobile applications for students. Essentially, our goal has been, for some time now, to allow students to engage and to interact with all of our business services, our student services, and our academic services via their mobile device. And we're very happy to say that that is done. It is live. We're kind of rolling it out. Our communication plan will actually start very aggressively this week to all students. But essentially, it allows students to register, to check financial aid, campus maps. It's multi-purpose. I have a little icon on my homepage. If you see that m.spcollege.edu down at the bottom, it is where you can go onto your browser on your whatever mobile device you have and it will allow you to bookmark it and it will download a little app like I have. But I want to point something out that I think is very, very important. This was a very, very diverse project. It obviously involved a lot of technology, but I want to just take one second and recognize the folks, many of them from enrollment management, from information technology, from marketing and information services, who had a hand in this. They've done great work at the same time they were doing all the other projects we have. Would you all stand, anyone who had a hand in this project? And they did all this in the midst of another 15 projects, so we're very proud of them and I'm very, very pleased to work with them. This is a great system. It is one where, let me, I'm just going to show you, once you actually go, this is what it looks like on a computer, so it doesn't, it looks very similar on your mobile device. I can pass mine around. I've got it on a nook. It pretty much goes on any, whether it's an Android system or an iPhone system. But you see in the upper left-hand corner there where it says My SPC Mobile, that is the key icon where the students log in and they can go in and they can do their learning plan, register, interact with any of the services that they can normally interact with if they're just on a regular computer version of our system. The rest of the icons allow them to go in and look at details on the course catalog. We actually have the Google, all of our buildings are mapped on there, but it's the outside, so we're going to do, we're going to jump on Dr. Oliver's bandwagon. We'll also add to that eventually, the internal sides of the building, but you can locate any building there. But it's quite diverse. I'll pass around the nook if you all just want to take a look at it maybe before or after the meeting and answer any questions that you have on that. We're very happy to be there, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on with our chairman. Just information, 7B, 7C. Next action is 7D. A, B, C, and D. Members of the Board, these, the grants are, I'm looking, these are well within, in fact, several of them are replacement grants for our summer programs. Kudos to J.C. and his team. They do a great job with youth down at the Allstate facility. You're hearing a lot about Common Core standards as part of the strengthening of the K-12 Initiative. The Florida College System has been asked to put together in-service training for public school teachers across the state. And if I say public school, that may extend to others. Captain Fine, two colleges emerge in the leadership. Indian River College is just really, does a great job and we have partnered with them. We'll expand it to other colleges in the state. Local superintendents here in the Tampa Bay area are very excited about our participation in the Common Core Standards Grant. The Dental Hygiene Training Grant, D1C, is a continuity of a grant that we've had in place for more than 10 years. It provides for 12 students a year within our dental hygiene program. These are members of the, these are military personnel and from the U.S. Air Force. We will do this for another six years. This program has been very well-received on both sides. And then I think some members of the Board who've been here for a good long while would be very rewarded that we have proceeded to identify a program to strengthen access to nursing programs by minority students. So we're trying to retool from the earliest grades all the way into those programs and kudos to our staff for finding the money for this to happen.
Dr. La, I used to say that we didn't have enough nursing students or nurses. I spent a lot of time around a hospital, three months, and I can tell you that just about every nurse that I've talked to has gone through our program and they have all been phenomenal. So, Dr. Nick DiTerra, please carry that back to your campus and let people know that. Seriously, I ask that all the time.
Our nursing dean is here.
Is she here?
Stand up.
Yeah. You guys should be commended. We're doing a great job. Everybody I talk to has nothing but good things to say now, you know, they've graduated because they've made it through the program, but they've done good jobs. And in fact, in one place, I was talking to a hospital administrator and she says that by far the most qualified and best students that they receive are from St. Pete College. So you guys should be commended for that, so good job. Sorry, Dr. La, I started that when you said the nursing program, but...
I had an X-ray this week and had a nice conversation with one of our students.
Yeah, exactly.
Works well. Members of the Board, each of those four grants require action and...
Move approval.
There's been a motion. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, accept those items. We're on to, we're on to, you're on to Capital Lee? Or are we? Yeah. Item E.
Information report?
Information report.
Move approval.
There's been, there's a motion. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? None being? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're on to agency billings. There's none. Administrative matters. Human resources, there's an action that we need to take on, the personnel report, the annual contract recommendations, and equity report. Is there anything that we need to get from you, Dr. La?
No, all three are standard items on the May agenda. We provided you with an executive summary of the very extensive, the state mandates, how the equity report is put together. The value of the report is high. The putting together of it is burdensome, so we try to give you a port. I think this Board has comfort that we are focused, as fully as an institution can, on serving all populations in our community and I think we could spend a whole meeting talking about our engagement. Plenty of room to improve, but I don't think there are members of the Pinellas County community who feel like they've been left behind or that they're being ignored, so I'm proud of the work we do for the equity report. Each year at this time, we bring you the renewal of the administrative contracts. Please know that you are seeing the ones that we are renewing. There are, as always, a small number who will not be renewed and they have been so notified.
Well, that lets everybody know there is a minimum guideline that you must meet, so I appreciate that. Board members, would you like to just take up G1, G and, G1 and 2? Is there a motion for that, if you'd like to take that or?
The budget we need to do is, finance, let's separate it. Yeah, we need a presentation on finance and the budget.
Is there a motion for?
G.
G1?
G1. So moved. Second.
And probably moved in second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, we're on to the finance report. Dr. Duncan. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning again. Not a lot new, but the same trend that we've been seeing. I did want to emphasize, though, on this chart this month, that you can see that the real key and where our focus is right now is on spending, is to keep spending in line with the reduced revenue that we summarized in the memo to you. We've already, you can already see a downward tick in the spending and we're maintaining about a $4 million surplus. We intend to try and maintain as close to that as we can over the next three months and the surplus is reflected at the bottom of the financials here. You will, I want to point out one thing you'll see finally came in line and that is, while the state appropriations are showing that expected 1.5 decline, they shifted that money into the lottery pot and we've now received approximately the same amount of lottery money that they cut the CC, the general appropriations amount by this year. So we'll, we still have about $6 million coming to us in lottery funds over the next three months, so we think we're in pretty good shape there. Any questions on the financial issues? I can move on to the budget if you'd like.
Any questions? No.
Let's move on to the budget update. Last month, we brought you sort of our first iteration, which was very preliminary. This second go-around is a little, slightly updated. We still obviously don't have final funding from the state, but of course, the first thing that we had to deal with was making adjustments for our tuition budget. We budgeted a little over $61 million this year. We're expecting to land at about $58.6 by the end of the year. So right off the top, we had to address, in terms of how we're going to fund things on July 1, we had to address this decrease of about $2.7 million. When we sit down every year and we go to think, well, how are we going to get the things done that we need to get done? We obviously have to first deal with new revenue or cuts in our revenue, which we have done at the top there, where you'll see I've indicated the decrease of $2.7 million in the tuition, about another $300,000 in the tuition-related fees. Right now, between the House and the Senate, we're looking around $3 million. We don't, again, don't know exactly where that will land, but that's what we're showing right now. We know we have about $106,000 in operating costs in new facilities and we're discussing a learning support access fee. We've put about $1.4 million into learning support in this current year's budget from last year's planning and then more this year, so we're, we have that on the table as an option. We also have, I've talked before about our reduction in indirect cost revenue, mostly from grants. The main thing, though, that we've, I think we've done a very good job with over the last few years and that is when it comes to finding additional ways to fund what we need to do, and that is either through budget reductions in other areas as well as reallocating existing funds. And so I've done a quick summary here. We will be moving about $1 million over into PICO from the technology infrastructure, which will free that money up to be used for other priorities. We expect about a $400,000 reduction in adjunct expense. We've had some budgeted positions reduced, utilities, I won't cover each one. But all in all, when you put all that together, including the reduction in revenue that we expect, we're looking at about $4.4 million right now in net revenue that we could use to fund our priorities. So with that $4.4 million that's available, we first have to take right off the top the $1.2 million in the retirement increase that we're expecting to come out of the legislature and we've also proposed and discussed a possible $2.5 million for a salary increase. So when we take those out of the $4.4, that leaves us, right now, we're looking at about $700,000 for strategic or other operational funding. I've asked Dr. Cooper and Dr. Williams just to quickly run through some of the strategic priorities that they have recommended be funded from that money.
All right. For the college experience, we are looking at more enhancements to the learning plan to make it more intuitive and user-friendly and also the student advising system that we're using for early alerts and some other areas. We also want to do something for orientation as well as career services. We also need to, we had a grant that's ending in September that support our veteran students, so we want to keep those staff on board for the support for those students. And in our partnership with the Able Trust Grant, we agreed to fund a little bit more of the salaries for that grant.
One of the areas in regards to our academic endeavors has to do with distance education. We have spent 12 years developing our instructional modality in the online environment. We've had all kinds of organic growth, but we recognize today that there are many organizations and entities getting into this field and that if we are to stay competitive and on the cutting edge, we need to begin to assess where we are and how we can improve and raise the standard of what we're currently doing. So one of the things that we want to do is to look at competency-based learning, which is a different approach in regards to the online environment. And so this is to bring in some consultants, possibly visit some schools that are using competency-based learning and look at how that might improve some of our distance education Other areas in which we would like to expand is in regards to the STEM area, our environmental science, microbiology, and possibly biotechnology. This would allow expansion in those areas. Also, we want to continue to support our online tutoring services with Smart Thinking, TurnItIn, and Peer Tutoring.
So a quick summary then of the $700,000 that I referenced, the total there on the areas... areas that Dr. Williams discusses, about $562,000 and those that Dr. Cooper discussed were about $331,000, which, again, preliminary, is leaving us with a little bit of a deficit there, but when we bring you the final budget next month, we will, we will have worked that out, but we just wanted to give you an idea of where we are. One thing I wanted to point out that we have built in right now, that has been growing over the last three years, this'll probably, it'll start to stabilize at this point because we've got the majority of our needs covered, is we've got now about $7 million in recurring funding for our enterprise systems, our technology systems, our network infrastructure and our desktop technology refresh funding. We also, of that $7 million, 2.4 of that is just for desktop refresh funding. That's the employee desktops, the labs, so on. Part of what we're bringing you, when we, we will also bring you next month, all the various budgets, one of which is the capital budget. And in that budget, we will be adding about 2.4 million in recurring capital equipment and maintenance renovation funding. That capital equipment piece is the last big chunk that we wanted to get funding with a recurring line of funding, and that's mostly campus-based academic instructional labs, so on, larger equipment that also needs to be refreshed. It's a different cycle as the technology, but nonetheless, we need to have plans put together to replace that. So, when all that's done, I think we've got a pretty good foundation to fund those critical needs going forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've tried to paint the, I always like to say, when you adopt the budget, what have you done? And I guess I'd like to see if I can't just summarize. You have, first and foremost, taken care of your employees in the form of a modest but demonstrable pay raise, well-earned, well-deserved. Secondly, you have made a strong commitment to the continuity of our efforts to support students in their studies at the front lines beyond the classroom. Thirdly, we have an enrollment plan that allows us to fund all of the enrollment we have this year. In fact, it has some enrollment upside built in. We did not plan the revenue for that yet, though, so we're trying to be as conservative as we might be. Fourthly, you see a continuing commitment to the planning of infrastructure systems so that we don't get surprised by big-ticket items. And then, fifthly, continued movement in ways of program development, moving into new programs that would help us meet new demands and new markets. A byproduct of all this, I'm very proud to say, is the money is moving to the front lines. It is moving away from us toward the front lines. Some of the things you don't even get to see is position redeployments from one area to another, that's a non-budget item if we redesign, but each of the campuses is getting, yet again, a new staff member out on the front line as part of a realignment within Vice President Williams' overall student services approach. I think it's a very responsible budget. There are two items that I want to be sure the board is aware that we emphasize. We've left it out of balance because we don't know what the final state number might be. We could very likely get enough money to balance this budget from the state, so I don't think we ought to spend the April board meeting beating ourselves up on a couple hundred thousand dollars. Secondly, though, we have opened the door, there's not a tuition increase, but I don't want to be too cute by half. We are engaging discussion, though, on what we're calling an access fee that would allow us to, again, put the resources in behind all of the things the students are getting. I mean, think of what we've created for students, enormous out-of-class learning, individual learning supports, enhanced career centers, all of those kinds of things. I don't want to back up on those. So, if for an access fee of $1 or $2, we can maintain that going forward, I know political, I mean, think of this, I mean, how tough are the politics if we're talking about a buck a credit hour to get all those things moving forward? And I don't want to misstate, you're the ones who get the call from the governor's office, he'll just, he'll just grab my arm when I'm with him. But I think this is a responsible budget. We're not asking you to adopt that today, let's see what the legislature does, but I would ask you to, as you're evaluating where we go, is to see if we can't keep the wind in our sails on these key issues.
Any comments, women?
No.
The $2.5 million salary, what is that, what percentage?
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half across the board.
Yeah, and we'll do it across the board at this juncture because, there's one other little nuance, this is kind of crazy, but one of the things that's happened is we'll probably pull a little trick so that if a few days of a pay period show up in late June, we usually then just allow that whole paycheck to be at the new levels or whatnot. We have to move a little bit of money to get it on track between June and July, we know how to do that. If, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'll just finish with this and then whatever questions. We have a fact, we've got a lot of individual things, but if this is the budget you are comfortable with, this is the budget with whatever follow-up you might have that we'll present to you in May with the updated numbers from the legislature and other kinds of things, my intention would be for you to be in a position to vote in May. We can let it sit till June if that's good government for that to happen, but we have done our best work to this point and we're happy to roll up our sleeves and do more if you want, but.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to say something to show you something to reinforce what Dr. Law is saying about where we've reallocated funds. This is from our business intelligence system showing the budgets. These light bars here are from the administrative, and you can see that those, but while those budgets have gone down, the instructional budgets in Dr. Cooper's area have risen over those same three years and the student service budgets have also risen accordingly. So, I think we've, with limited funds, I think we've done a really good job of reallocating our funds to get it in line with our priorities, so.
That was a sneaky backdoor way of Doug showing you his new tool, which is we now have, we now have a business intelligence system on budgets. You can go back many years and do what-ifs kinds of things, so. Mr. Chairman, one other item that I want for the board's attention today, if I can, we're, we've done a little bit better than I thought, but it doesn't take much to find the term MOOC showing up in how colleges are responding to online, all kinds of things, and you won't be surprised to find our team has put together something that's already in play across the state. The chancellor sent out a thing, soliciting requests for people who wanted to apply for a grant to develop MOOCs, and we just sent them the link to our MOOC. So, Jesse, if you would, this is nice work.
What we find is that there's much focus on developmental education at this time within the state and nationally, and we want to be good stewards and reduce the cost and accelerate students through the process in ways that make sense, because we know that research shows us that the longer that they spend in developmental education, the less likely they are to graduate. And for many of our students, math tends to be one of the gateway courses for them. And so, we asked a team of our faculty and other support staff to work with Jesse Coraggio and to create the first MOOC in math remediation. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse and let him explain.
Thank you.
Mr. Brett, you made the comment earlier that the board likes cool things.
We love cool things.
I think this might fit in that category, but I might be a little biased. We've had a team of about 10 of us that have met almost every Monday afternoon since the beginning of the term, working on this idea, and you may have heard a lot about MOOCs. What is a MOOC? Well, in general, a MOOC is a massive, open, online course, and you heard about a lot of them and then some of the attention they're getting and the focus has been on some of the technology schools, you know, the MITs, a lot of the courses they've opened up with these MOOCs have been things like artificial intelligence, you know, high-end topic areas that literally have tens of thousands, almost as much as 100,000 students in a single course, who are looking at a very specialized topic. Well, this has gotten a lot of attention, and there's also grant dollars. In fact, we're going to be applying for a state grant of $300,000 to do even more than what we've done at this point. But what a MOOC generally is, is it's the idea of a free course that's very large scale. It's intended to have social components for students where they can actually learn and help each other as they go through the process. It's intended to be self-paced, and one of the issues they've had with MOOCs over time has been, and they haven't had them out that long, is completion, because people get very excited about a topic area, they get involved into a free course, but they don't have to pay anything for it. And then after time goes by, they get bored and drop out of the course. Well, we wanted to take the good things that are associated with the MOOC and apply them where we can help students here at St. Petersburg College, and our focus is in developmental education. One issue that's kind of a hot topic related to MOOCs right now is how do we certify the learning? You know, as an educational institution, that's our job. If we offer free courses, how do we certify that students actually learn the topic area? Where we felt this could work in the developmental education area is we could focus on getting enrolled in college-level courses. So, we kind of have a built-in tool that allows us to certify learning, and that's our PERT test or our college placement test that students take. Now, we focused specifically initially on the area of math, because a lot of times, if you've been a math student, and we have students that come to our college after being out of high school for a few years, math's kind of the first thing to go. Most of us don't use algebra day-to-day, you know, and if you've been away from it for a little while, it's difficult to take it back. So, instead of just handing pamphlets, which we have information now we give out as remediation, we actually wanted to build a self-paced course that takes advantage of the MOOC ideas, that a student could go in and actually remediate through different levels of math. It's somewhat adaptive in the sense that they take assessments as they go along and it lets them know where they're weak, and they can focus on those content areas. It's self-paced, it has video instruction that goes along, so they can actually follow along with the video and learn that information. So, these are our seven premises for the MOOC that we actually developed. We wanted a MOOC that was going to be free to everyone. And when I say free to everyone, I don't mean just St. Petersburg College students. It's literally free to anyone in the state. We're in pilot right now, we're hoping to go live around May 8. We have about 30 students in the MOOC right now, and we've got good feedback so far for the ones that are participating. But this will be available for high school students. In fact, we have high school students in there right now from Pinellas County Schools. These are available for our students coming in and taking the CPT and either remediation or want to take it before they take the placement test, and it'll be free to any student around the state of Florida, because the college placement test is standardized across all 28 community colleges. So, this is a necessary tool for all students, not just St. Petersburg college students. It's going to be self-paced, so they have the ability to go in there and work at their own speed. Again, it's somewhat adaptive and they can focus on those areas they feel that they're weak. It's not going to be an instructor or facilitator, it'll actually be their self-paced as they go through the tool. It's designed for remediation, it's not really designed for direct instruction. If you don't know how to divide fractions, you know, you're not going to go here and figure that out from the tool. It's really designed as a remediation tool so they can build on some of their strengths as they've had weaknesses that have gone through the high school curriculum. It's an option for placement test remediation, and that's how we've used it in the pilot. So, if students come in and they've actually taken our PERT and they've tested below college readiness, they have an option to remediate. And for our pilot group, we put them right into this MOOC course. They then can take the MOOC and we'll assess that and follow that over time and make sure that they then are successful at college-level work. It's a refresher, as I mentioned before, for math students that haven't done it for a while, and the learning's going to be certified, and that's a key part to Merck's MOOCs. Our learning's going to be certified with actually using our placement test. So, if I can actually ask you to play the video, this is the introduction video that a student would see after the registration process. Welcome to St. Petersburg College's free course, Get Ready for College Math. We've designed this self-guided course to help you enter college prepared for success. Maybe it's been a while since you took a math class. Maybe you didn't do as well as you liked on the placement test. Maybe you just need a confidence boost. This class will help. You will find a 30-question pre-assessment at the beginning of each of the six sections. Take your best shot at it. If you master the pre-assessment, you can move on to the next section. If your score shows you're not quite an expert yet, work your way through the problems and instruction. There will be a link to additional videos and instruction in each section as well. Here's a hint, you'll get the most benefit from this course if you do the problems yourself by hand. Most questions on the placement test must be completed without a calculator, so it's best to learn to do the problems without one. Once you've mastered one section, you can move on to the next, but you can always go back and review previous material anytime you want. At the end, the final assessment will help you evaluate everything you have learned. We hope this course is helpful and is the first step to a productive, successful college experience for you at St. Petersburg College. Team that worked on it, and I've actually have some of the members of the team here that like this theme and we recognize. We did this first MOOC with very little dollars and a lot of dedication by staff to make it happen. We're hoping to get some grant money from the state and really be able to elaborate on that.
Great job. Any comments from anyone?
Well, that is very cool.
Thank you.
Now, who else is doing this out there? What other community colleges?
I've heard rumors of some, but no one that's come out publicly. We actually went to the Region 4 AFC conference, and that was our first announcement that we're doing that. So far, no one stepped up and said, "We also have one." University of Florida just came out and said they were the first Florida university to have MOOCs, but they actually went ahead and had a contractor that they paid in order to do that. I mean, they didn't build them themselves. So, we, I think we are the first or near the first community college to be able to do this, and especially our focus on developmental and remediation.
And the thought behind opening it up to anyone in the state of Florida, I think that's awesome, but from your perspective, what are the bonuses of doing that? What's the advantages of doing that?
It follows in the true tradition of what a MOOC's all about. A MOOC is supposed to be about free opportunities for education. It really speaks to our mission of open access. There are some nuances that will have to work out in terms of volume. We've had those conversations among our team. I mean, there literally could be 10,000 students in this course, once we open it up to the state. But I think it really sets us apart as a leader in this specific area, and you know, that's a big, hot legislative topic right now. We haven't even seen what developmental education's going to look like, but yet we've stepped up as a college and a leader and said, "We're going to help." Regardless of what decision the legislature makes, we're going to build a tool that's going to help students.
Very nice. Very impressive. Congratulations to your whole team.
That was a great team.
It's really cool.
University of Florida has Mr. Tebow as that spokesperson. It's a little different from us.
Where are we at here? I'm sorry, I got lost.
The president's report.
Bachelor of process.
I've asked for that to be, just in the interest of time, okay.
So, okay, so, oh, there's no rule changing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing now. Are there any speakers? And I'll close the public hearing. And move to our next item, which is the president's report and the legislative update.
Streamline, we're down to the, I mean, it's getting serious now. The budgets have been passed, the conference committee's been named, now the game really gets started. Let me focus on three separate things. We still are struggling mightily with emergent public policy on developmental education. On one hand, we're getting exactly what we wanted, which was the wherewithal to try lots of different things, experiment, use your best guidance, let colleges break out of a 16-week semester basis, and you've seen our program work on that. On the other side, there are, we are being pushed to push developmental education into college-level courses and then figure out how to serve students within that particular framework. That's, I can get there for some students who are close to college level, it's a very difficult piece if students are very far off college level to parachute them into a college-level course. We're working very closely, and I will tell you, I want to make sure everybody hears from me, our chairman has helped us engage the right people to see if we can get this on track, and developmental education is one. Dual enrollment, this institution has, for all practical purposes, has found a dual enrollment program as we have, you know, keep in mind, we've served 2,900 students in some form of dual enrollment. As it turns out, you know, we have handled that growth without additional state resources. The presidents have made that a priority. Some work between the presidents and the superintendents fell apart. I believe we're going to get one more quiet conversation behind the scenes with some folks. We'll take any funding. We've got all the expense and none of the revenue, so we're willing to make any deal that gets us some revenue. It all falls to the bottom line for us. Very popular program, I like it a lot, parents love it, we'll do that. The third area that this college has engaged in over two years has to do with the creation of some sort of online learning enhancement at the highest levels across of some sort of online learning enhancement at the highest levels across state government. You've heard talk about a twelfth university, all that sort of stuff. That's sort of pulling in a little bit, the Board of Governors have designated University of Florida to take a lead within the state university system. That's being done, though, without all of us having to get subsumed underneath that right now, so there's some benefit for us to keep doing that. I will tell you, and I think I may have sent you, we maintain the number-one position in the amount of online learning we do in this institution. We're half again the next closest guys at Valencia and other places. This is a big piece for us. We're involved. I think it's going to work out for us to keep doing what we're doing. It's one of those quiet periods where if you got it the way you want it, just keep your head down, move to the finish line, so I think we're on that. Those are the three major issues. We, funding, we came out okay, not great. There's a sense that some more funding is going to show up. We're lobbying for an additional twenty million dollars to go into the community college program fund, which is sort of the general theater to all of our ongoing operations. That would produce for us about a million one or a million two, in which case, we would put that in the budget, and then, I think we would redirect what we're asking you to do on behalf of revenue sources or whatnot. So, that's why we just didn't feel like we wanted to get ahead of that or you on those issues. Those are the three major issues. We've spent some good time up there. Students were there with us last week. We're still very well-received. I think, again, people would say that people respect greatly the work that's been done over a long period of time by this institution to engage key public policies. MOOC, we are now in the discussion on wherever this goes, we're at the front door of that. Developmental education, you saw our Bridge to Success program that was presented to you in this boardroom. It won the chancellor's leadership award. I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself, but we're going to win an award from the National Department of Education for that program, too. So, you see us doing the kinds of things that are driving public policy forward, and I'm very happy to represent us in all of those kinds of things. Lastly, graduation is May fourth. Arrive early, it's at the Tropicana Field. The logistics work pretty well, wear comfortable shoes is the best guidance I can give you. It starts at ten, the guidance says get there at nine-thirty. We have breakfast and snacks and some camaraderie. I think you would do well to get there just a little earlier than that, so. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your help over the past month, and a lot of work being done. Appreciate it a great deal.
So, we're here for, before we adjourn, I got a quick question. Now, Mr. Brett thinks this is his last meeting.
Next month, no, no, no.
Oh, all right, I was going to say, we're not getting rid of you. I put an application in for you, just so you know.
Well, the, you know, you serve until your replacement is named.
That's what I thought, okay.
And I suspect he'll be saying nice things at my going-away party.
Yeah, I was going to say, he'll probably be here for the next two, three years.
They haven't named replacements in a very timely basis, so.
Well, I truly don't want you to get off this board, Mr. Brett, but I know you have some other things that you're going to do.
Well, I shared with Dr. Law recently that I'm coming up on five and a half years. I served the remaining term of Cecil Keen, and then, was reappointed for a four-year term that is ending next month, and so, I thought, well, five and a half years is a nice run, and that it was time to pass the baton. So, I guess technically, next month is my last meeting, but who knows?
Yeah, like I said, like Dr. Law said, you'll be at his retirement party as a board member. Well, if there's no other, anybody have any future agenda items? Great meeting, thank you all so much. Thank you, Dr. Law. Meeting adjourned.
Hey, Dick.